Alright, good evening. The board has now returned from closed session and will begin the regular session of Keys Union School District Board and Trustees meeting. Starting off with four point one, closed session items, we have nothing to report out. Four point two, we have two amendments, six point one point three, six point one point four, those are two public comments that we added that I'll read at that time. Is anything else to add or change? Do we have motion to approve as is?
Make them one.
Uh first, uh second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to seven point one, all events postponed until further notice. Eight point one, staff reports, we've read the staff reports, do we have anything to add? Oh, I totally skipped the, I skipped a lot.
Yeah.
Moving back to flag salute. Uh, Mr. Green.
On my pleasure.
Thank you, they have confused me. How did I just miss my notes?
Ready, begin. On my pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, by the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, and one power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, I skipped so much, but moving on to education and trust of board trustees, we have four that have been sent us by email. We're gonna read them, these aren't my words, I'm reading them as they come. The first one is, uh, from Christie Barret. Dear Superintendent Brazil and K U S D Board, I'm writing as concerned parent of three school-aged daughters in grade ten, seven, and five. And I am begging you to take a look at the decisions you have made concerning our children's lives. I believe you, I believe you, our county and state leaders have demonstrated no fundamental understandings of education and value control under the guise of safety more than you value children's getting education. Quite simply, you're not meeting the needs of acting in the best interest of our children. You have shut down the most essential business of all, our schools. The data, the science, and the common sense simply do not support the severity of the path you have chosen. It is a disputable fact that K twelve students are a demographic least likely to be infected negatively by COVID nineteen. I'm well aware that we can all be carriers or a systematic. Are there risks? Of course. There is a risk of getting out of bed in the morning, riding in a car, or walking down the stairs. We cannot make life-altering decisions on what might happen. We al- we are almost seven months into school closure and our students' mental health is suffering. Anxiety, depression, and suicides are on the increase nationwide. Why? Because you have deprived children of their childhood experience. Field trips, sports, science fairs, count shows, school carnivals, to name a few of the elementary-age kids. And high schoolers, you have flat-out robbed them of their social development, life experience, and athletic opportunities. They have turned into screen zombies. It is an absolute shame that these kids cannot go to school or practice any extracurricular activity but can go to the big store and open as an essential business. Distance learning is not working. The teachers are working twice as hard and the students are learning half of that as much. The education gap is growing as well. Those with means are paying instructors, instruct- instructors to tutor their children or putting them in private schools that are open. You're kidding yourself if you do think this is happening. Where is the equity in that? Current C D C data shows that for ages zero to fifty, there is a ninety-eight percent recovery rate for those infected with COVID. So if you continue to ignore the data and common sense and not open schools up, can I assume it is because of some other reason other than safety? Is it the teachers' unions who have their hands tied? Please say so. If it's because you have accepted state funds with a stipulation of staying closed, please say so. If your current guidelines to open under case six waiver are too costly or time-consuming, please say so. Parents are not buying the safety excuse anymore, and as always, there are students or teachers who are not comfortable returning to the classroom, then please continue to learn from home. But for the vast majority of the kids from all backgrounds, this is far more damage being done than whatever COVID would cost. So please open up the schools and let the kids back to being kids. Thank you for your time, Christie Barret. That's the first one. The second one is from Rachel Florrie. Uh, school board members, I am writing as concerned parent and asking you to consider allowing the students at Keys Academy to return to campus. And these are our bullet points. We are a very small school and could easily monitor the children for the virus. Our students only go to the campus two days a week in grades nine through twelve. We already have a different learning in place which would be convenient for those families who do not wish to have the children on campus. The next one is, it's time to consider the mental health of our students as well as their physical well-being. And the last one is, we have considered what we are modeling to our students. Are we encouraging fear or courage? Uh, sincerely, Rachel Florrie. This is the one that's added, six point one point three, from Kathy Bowman. Dear board members of Keys to Learning Charge School, My name is Kathy Bowman and I am a parent of a freshman student at K T L C. I'm extremely concerned that our students haven't returned to campus for teaching nor have I heard of any future date there. I'm seeing many schools that have turned a labor and are now back on campus. I'm trusting that our school has made the same step also. Distance learning is okay, but it's far from ideal. As a parent, I must consider possibly pulling my child out if we are continuing to discipline for the rest of the school year. I do want to plead that you open all grades as the COVID nineteen is not a threat to those under the age of eighteen. And science is proving that they are not spreaders. Thank you. I think our small charter school needs to be fighting for our kids in this regard. I will repeat that our school is small with less students than a traditional school, special high school students are on land campus two days a week. The bonus that our school provides is that we are set up for homeschooling through K T L C. If any parent is comfortable with their children, isn't comfortable with their children back on campus, thank you for your consideration. And the last one that was added on, uh, Elizabeth herself. Uh, Mrs. Gerbey, my two children are students at Keys to Learning Charge School and I also reside in Keys. The educators at the school have done a phenomenal job getting through the crisis and assisting parents with education of our children. The, they have been flexible and you can tell they really love our kids. I know the governor, Newsom, has put a series of executive orders in which, in my opinion, go outside of this authority. Nevertheless, we find ourselves under the draconian rule and our children are suffering as a result. The lockdown of our kids have caused so much stress, loss of education, and social emotional problems. Both of my kids are confused and saddened that they cannot go to school, they miss their friends, distance learning cannot duplicate classroom setting, Zoom is glitchy and inconsistent. My fifth grade student today says she hates the videos. Do we really want our kids staring at a screen for that much time? Do only, to only absorb partially? My children are safe, but what about the kids whose only safe place is at school? The kids who are in a sense of drowning at home, lost hoping for some rescue. In short, let the kids go back to school, follow the signs, and the science says transmission is low among children. Thank you for hearing my comments respectfully, Elizabeth Perse. Thank you. Alright, now can we go to seven point one now? Moving on to seven point one, all events postponed until further notice. Eight point one, staff reports, we have read those, do we have any questions? Thank you. Moving on to eight point two, Keys to Learning Charge School real in comments.
Good evening, sir and女士们. I just have a short statement that I'm going to read and, uh, so I just want to let know that on behalf of the K T L K twelve staff, we are going to anticipate having students on campus, realizing that there is a lot of work to be done, and appreciate all the preparation that is already taken place to save the day this time. Any questions?
No, I think I did. Moving on to eight point three, Keys Teachers Association.
Well, I apologize for all the heavy camp for the time that a rusty didn't pay. Um, hopefully I will have happy holidays. Okay, so thank you very much for having me letting allow me to come tonight and address the board. Uh, I'm in behalf of Keys Teachers Association. And that would be the teachers that teach, um, at Keys Elementary School and Scranton Middle School. Um, before I get into the main topics that I just wanted to discuss, I did have, um, a couple teachers who wanted to address the possibility of our school opening up to, um, the only twenty-five percent because there was some talk of that and I'm, I'm not sure if that's a possibility. Um, some teachers are somewhat in favor of that, that was the only thing. And then, but I had a couple teachers that just wanted me to read what they, what they were thinking. So, um, so one of, uh, one of my colleagues said, um, I, I would really not like to open at twenty-five percent. I think the educational experience I am currently offering is about ninety percent of normal. If we go back, if we go to twenty-five percent of students on campus, I think the education we will be offering will be much less. I think it's unfair for some students to be allowed on campus and, and not others. So I would very much like to reopen once everyone can be on campus, then it's safe and for whoever feels comfortable coming back to campus. So that was one, and then I just have another one from another colleague who said, um, and unless all students can return in whatever form, they, um, they, they, that being a district, um, should not do anything, um, should not do anything. From what I've seen and heard, all districts, all other districts are bringing back everyone. Sillman is going to have students, um, uh, let's see. And bringing back just certain populations like the, um, like the low English learners, uh, that were in the beginning, English learners, um, would not be fair to the students or the teacher, and it kind of defeats the purpose of integration. And so, um, and also twenty-five percent might cause an outbreak amongst parents because parents might hold all students in school. And that, um, that it might be better to plan after Thanksgiving or the early of January when we come back from winter break. I've heard that serious is planning this. Okay, so, so that's, those are just a couple comments from my colleagues. But tonight, I would like to talk about two things, safety and security. Um, first, safety. The safety of our staff, our students, their families, and our community has always been our number one priority in the district. It's written in our district documents and emphasized on a continual basis. As staff, we all play an important part in to make sure that we follow safety protocols and do our part to maintain the safest campuses and learning environments possible. Now, with the outbreak of COVID nineteen, we have a whole new paradigm of safety issues to deal with. After having our campuses closed for seven months, we are looking at to opening up our schools to hundreds of children and adults. And with this comes a long list of new safety measures in which to implement along with huge decisions on how and when to reopen for the sake of safety. Please know, our board and our superintendent, that the teachers and the staff within our district are extremely grateful that our district has chosen to be safe and followed recommendations and guidance from professional health officials at federal, state, and local levels. We're hopeful that our leadership will continue to be supportive of putting safety first and foremost when making decisions about reopening our schools. So, before we look into what should happen on the inside, we need to look at what is happening on the outside. So there are a few things to consider. Sanit化is still in the highest tier, even if it's not the highest. Professional health organizations and officials do not recommend opening schools while in the highest risk category, even with a waiver and safety measures. We have just moved into the red tier, just today. And we must wait two weeks to see if the numbers continue to go down. We've been in the purple for a long time and we're not out of goods yet. And I think there are individuals and entire families in Keys currently infected with COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen is not weakened. It is not on way and it continues to spread. What we know about this virus seems to be ever-changing. And Dr. Brazil tells us all the time, he's very on top of keeping up with whatever news is coming out. He sends it out to his parents square, um, emails, and telling us some things include as mud and, and other things are fluid and just changing minute by minute. Um, but most of the guidance given to us by state officials and Department of Education and health services agencies on reopening schools was issued several months ago. Just September thirtieth, the largest COVID nineteen contact tracing study to date found that children and young adults are potentially much more important in transmitting the virus. And I do have, um, su- um, I can cite where all of the research came from as well if anyone wants it, so. Um, this, there, um, especially within households that previous, that previous studies have identified. The study which was conducted by universities and health officials in the United States and India was supported by the National Science Foundation and Centers for Disease and Disease Control and Prevention. And they stated that kids are very efficient transmitters, that's quote-unquote. Kids are very efficient transmitters. Contrary to what some people may believe, children contract COVID nineteen and they spread it to their peers, to their families, and to their teachers. A C D C study published August seventh this year in Morbidity and Mortality Weekly, not a highly recommended magazine, depressing. But the C D C reported that their investigation of a COVID nineteen outbreak at a youth camp in Georgia this summer, adding to the body of evidence demonstrating that children of all ages are susceptible to SARS-CoV- two, COVID nineteen infection, and contrary to early reports, might play an important role in the transmission of COVID nineteen. The camp had multiple safety measures in place, but they were not sufficient to prevent an outbreak in the context of substantial community transmission. Two hundred and sixty out of three hundred and forty-four children and camp leaders out of camp were infected within a few days. Two hundred and sixty out of three hundred and forty-four. I didn't do the percentage on that one. Also, uh, new scientific information published in Science Magazine and Time Magazine, as recent as one week ago, are finding that a substantial share of COVID nineteen cases are the result of transmission through aerosols or airborne or breath. Aerosol transmission is similar to droplet transmission except that the bits of fluid are so small that they can linger in the air for minutes to hours, and they can float and travel and be in the air long enough to be inhaled. Aerosols accumulate poorly in, um, accumulate in poorly ventilated indoor air, leading to super-spreading events where lots of people get it all the time. They act like smoke. After being expelled, they don't fall to the ground, but rather disperse through the air, getting diluted by air currents and being inhaled by others present in the same space. The most dangerous place to be is in a room with poor circulation and ventilation or, or with a system that recirculates the aerosols all day. Experts say when it comes to schools, wearing face masks and cleaning surfaces are not enough. They are recommending a menu of additional measures, many which call for different ways of circulating and filtering the air. But these steps are often expensive, rarely mandatory, and generally require help from professional engineers. And they can run counter to modern building design, which aims to seal the so-called, um, building envelope to reduce heating and cooling costs. Many of our classrooms don't have windows that open. And, um, and the new goal is to bring in more fresh air. We're hoping that our district can ensure us that, that we have the best ventilation and filtering of air available before we put our children down in the classroom. But we know this might take time and many. Um, contact tracing shows that when it comes to COVID nineteen, being outdoors is twenty times safer than being indoors. And even though we could do some outdoor learning, it's not feasible to conduct school outside all day, every day. We are also in fire season with potential harmful air outside, making it dangerous to be indoors with fresh outdoor air circulating or being, um, outdoors in the smoky air. Now, make no mistake about it, teachers want to be back in the classroom teaching the kids desperately. But we can't ignore sites, scientific facts, and safety and research the facts of that. We are not the experts, but there is expert myself. By opening up school campuses while our county is in the red or purple tier of high or highest risk, would be ignoring the safety recommendations put in place by professional health experts and puts the health and lives of our students, staff, and community at risk. If a child or an adult on our district campus, in, on our district campuses, were to have a serious or fatal reaction from contracting COVID nineteen at school, the district, the teachers, the maintenance staff, and others may possibly be held liable or responsible. If it were to be proven that we did not implement the most extensive safety measures, it's almost unimaginable that it too, that, that this would happen. But COVID nineteen has proven to be an unimaginable pandemic, anything else. It just makes sense to be as cautious as possible and cover all of our bases when we're talking loud. Okay, now I'd like to tou- to touch on stability. Our students have been through a tremendous transition, going from in-class instruction to distance learning. Bringing them back to school sooner rather than later would be wonderful. But it would also be another transition, especially with safety measures in place. Um, it, it takes at least a couple weeks to learn the classroom rules and routines, no matter when the kids come back, especially after seven months. And even longer to incorporate learning, uh, learning how to social distance, how to not share. I know we said it was okay before, but it's not okay now. Um, and, uh, learning from a desk and a chair instead of a sofa or a cushy bed because it's so cute to see the kids on Zoom and some of them are on a cushy sofa or laying on their pillow. And they'll also most likely, uh, have to learn how to split their work between home and school because they probably won't be here all day. And once the kids get the hang of, of the new in-school learning, it will be good. It will be great, really good. But if we open while our coun- while our county is still in a high-risk tier, there is a good chance that there will be an outbreak of COVID nineteen at our schools. Someone is going to be infected. And we don't know who it will be, child, teacher, and administrator. Someone will bring it and spread it. And when it does spread, it spreads like wildfire. Uh, this is one of the most highly contagious viruses we've ever seen, if not the most highly contagious virus. Look at what happened at our nation's capital. It spread through top officials, including the president of the United States. Thirty-four White House staffers and other con- contacts were infected. And more. So what would make us think that we are more immune to the spread of the virus when it can't even be stopped among the most protected individuals in the world? Schools all over the United States have opened up and then shut down because of the virus outbreak. In fact, just today, Gregory High School in the Desto had to shut down due to a virus outbreak. Our students are likely to go through cycles of coming back to school, returning home for quarantine and distance learning, coming back to school, returning home again for distance learning. If we end up yoyoming like this, there may end up being even bigger learning gaps and transitions. We also need to look at the stability of our staff. If we return to face-to-face instruction while our county numbers are in the red or purple tier and it's not safe, there is a high likelihood that some teachers or other staff members will be forced to take a leave of absence due to personal medical risks or medical conditions or risks of family members. Until it is safe for them to return, this would mean hiring long-term substitute teachers at a time when substitute teachers are in high demand and low supply. And students would have to adjust to another transition. Our kids have adjusted to a new school year and their new teacher and distance learning. They've been through so much. It would be very difficult to put them through more and disrupt their learning by shuffling classes and teachers just, just to get them back into the classroom. We can't succumb to toxic positivity where we pretend that everything is okay and appear to be optimistic when everything is not okay. And there are real problems and challenges that need to be dealt with to actually make everything okay. It's great to be optimistic and working toward the goal of opening our schools and welcoming, welcoming our students back. But it needs to be optimism based on scientific credibility and done with a safety according to health officials and professionals, not just because we want to open and because other schools are doing it. So I just want to touch a little bit on our students before I conclude. And our staff. Our students are amazing. They are so amazing. They belong anywhere. They are definitely going through struggles, but they are trying their very best and they are succeeding. It may not be up where we want it, but it's like a miracle. They are adapting, they are progressing, they are encouraging each other, and they want to do well. Parents have also been doing an amazing job. I know they want their students back at school more than anyone else. But with love and patience, they created really awesome learning environments at home. Students show us their desks, whiteboards, binders, their little files, their little organizers, and their little drawers with all their supplies. It's, it's pretty amazing. They are so proud of their learning spaces and it is heartwarming to see these kids and their families and what they're doing to help cope through these difficult times. Education is not being lost at this time. Students are learning skills they will use for our government. They're becoming technology wizards and they're learning how to make their own space at home to study and learn skills they need even when they come back to the classroom. We are so proud of our students. And they are safe at home and they will survive if they are not put at risk. And something about our teachers. Most of our teachers at Keyes School District are what we call wipers. The majority of teachers started their careers at Keyes and stayed until they retired. We stay here because we love the kids, the families, the small community, and the amazing dedication as a district we all have for quality education. We believe our schools and this district are the best in that county. We really totally all believe in them. And some of us feel that it is unfair that we would be told we have to return to work before it's safe, putting our lives and the lives of our families at risk. Some jobs pose like for instance, like the armed services, police officers, firefighters, and the like. We sign up for that. God bless them for that. We would do anything for our students, their families, and the community, but we did not sign up for putting our lives and the lives of our family at risk. It would be so sad to think that years of dedication to students and the community would be overlooked and our lives would be put on the line unnecessarily. So, in conclusion, I think that's a happy one, almost done. Rushing back to school would be putting hundreds of children, hundreds of children and adults at risk in our small community. We will not be safe and there is a good chance that some will not even survive. Is returning to school while they're in a high-risk category and safe worth putting our lives, the lives of our students, their families, staff, and community members at risk for contracting a very serious, fast, deadly virus? We just want it to be there. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, thank you for speaking up for your. All right, moving on to A-Quinn for California School Employees Association, Chapter 544. That's your honor. Look at us, fifty minutes.
Hello, my name is Homer Vizer.
Yeah.
I'm a CSCA chapter president.
Can you speak into the mic? I don't think the mic pump can pick you up.
Is that better?
Is it? Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I say my name is Homer Vizer and I'm a new CSCA chapter president. And I wanted to share with the board your evidence and your report. I'd also like to take a minute to thank the board for their concerns. And especially would like to recognize Superintendent Brazil for having the courage to stand up and be more worried about the safety of our, all of our employees here at Keyes and not pay them to the pressure from the community to open up early or with a waiver. Thank you, sir. Um, we sent an email out to all our students, our classified employees, and had them respond. All of this in no special order because I know what we've got for it. Who will stop parents from coming onto campus in the mornings when they drop off their kids if they aren't remaining outside the gates? When the kids are outside the classroom, either going to lunch or playing or whatever, who is going to enforce them wearing a mask all the time? If a student shows signs of COVID-19 and they are placed in one of those Papa Pines that they're putting up everywhere, who is going to be responsible for sitting out there with students since they can't be left alone? If they're going to have breakfast and lunch on campus, are they being inside or outside? And how safe can it be for us watching them if they're not wearing masks? Will employees be tested for COVID-19 and if so, who will pay for the test? Who would be paid if we were quarantined for fourteen days if somebody felt COVID-19 here at school? Are students going to have their temperature taken when they enter the gates each morning when you start school? This next one is kind of important, I believe. This comes from our speech tutor. She's in room twenty-one A and you've ever seen her room, it's about six by ten. And her words is, she's concerned of having multiple students at this time in a classroom so small. She's unable to distance any of the kids sixteen apart. And when they're doing their speech stuff, they have no mask on so that speech teachers can understand them properly. And that leaves me in there with them that exposed to everything going around. Is there any way that we could get moved to another classroom? Um, I was told that there are a couple of rooms that are already vacating. And I know it would be temporary, but it would be a lot better if, you know, we could be safe. And nobody's addressed this yet, so I want to bring it to all your attention. And I wanted to do a little bit of things. Education for our students is very important. But during that, depending that's going on complicates the situation. The help of the members of our staff and community is very important. And is it worth opening up the school and taking the chance for somebody to get sick? I don't think so. And yes, we want our students back, but we want to do it when there is a virus killer out there. And then the last one. When you guys, the board takes a vote to reopen or stay closed. I think on each view, if you really feel this, you know, the right kind of open and it's safe, would you be willing to come down and open the gates every morning and be students as they come in? And talk with the parents that come with their kids? Because when you go home and you get, if you got a virus, can you take it home to your family, your wife? Or any other adults there? Are you willing to take that risk? Because it feels that we are being put in that situation and we have no choice. If you say open, be open. And maybe so either. But we're going to put a risk, everybody should be doing their best until there's a, you know, something to stop this killer continuing on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Any comments or anything on that, or are you just listening? No, any comments? All right, thank you. Moving on to extension items, and I really appreciate if you guys comment and share tonight. I mean, we've, we've been sitting up here making tough decisions, we, you guys know our rules, we know we're on safety first. Um, it's good to hear, um, we're with you guys, we, we are. There's going to be eventually a time when we open, and, you know, when that's right, we'll, we'll also support it no matter what that vote is. Um, but, uh, we appreciate you guys, what you guys are doing, we know you're on campus, we know you're putting all that work in right now. And we do know you guys are doing the best you can, so we do appreciate it. Moving on to extension items, actually prepared for a sit calendar, our assistant with adopted and approved policies of the district are deemed routine in nature. They'll be acted upon in one motion without discussion unless members of the board request that item be removed from the sit calendar. And that event will be taken up in order indicated on the main agenda. Any questions for nine point one, seven, nine point six? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Do we have a first, do we have a second?
I'll submit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point one, approval of certified classified confidential management and personal actions. Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to approv- uh, ten point two, approval resolution twenty dash twenty-one dash oh seven authorizing authorization of interactive flat panels and hover cam pilot X-S.
Do you have any other thing? Um, just that we, in order to use some of the federal funding that's being made available to the districts to, um, support distance learning, um, we are replacing this, a kind of a suite of equipment in each of the classrooms for when we return and should we be on distance learning to provide better equipment and possibilities for our entire teaching staff to be able to better communicate with kids and to engage them with the, kind of the latest and the greatest. So we're asking the board to approve the resolution so that we can proceed with purchasing of those materials and it, or not materials, but the, like I said, it's more like a technology suite. Um, and every teacher will have the exact same thing, so it's, um, kind of a, plus they will be trained and provided. Um, but we, again, are waiting for a lot of this equipment, as much of, uh, anything, including Chromebooks or other devices are all backward. So we're facing kind of a delay when this comes and we'll slowly, um, implement it as it, as it does right.
I'd like to add, Mr. Brazil and I have seen like, uh, products in Sacramento when we went to a conference and they have, uh, came and showed some of the teachers last year, like products. And the teachers got to ask questions, demonstrate, and it went very well. It's, uh, totally different than this one, where they're smart TVs, man. Uh, pretty neat technology and.
Is that like what the preschool has?
It's exactly what the preschool has, that's the exact, same thing.
Yep. All right, any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I don't wish.
Whoa, we caught you on that one. Do we have a first, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Jimmy was more excited about TV than you were. Moving on to ten point three, approval of resolution twenty dash twenty-one dash oh eight, approval award contract for immediate procurement of goods and services to foster safer learning and teaching environment during COVID-19 pandemic.
This is what we're being asked by the county and from fiscal services to really grant the authority to purchase these items that we're doing with, with these dollars that are both from federal and state, um, to, uh, kind of help with the costs associated with COVID-19 and, um, whether it be for supplies, equipment, um, or procedures and training, extra hours, all of that. So we, we're asking that the board approve the resolution so that we can continue to, um, to do so.
Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do we have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point four, approval of twenty twenty-one school attendance review board SAR contract.
Yes, la- um, we had at, uh, last year during budget development, we were facing some very hard times and, and not moving straight ten percent across the board cut. So one of the programs that were actually cut were the SAR, the Student Attendance Review Board. Um, and they have now kind of, it's, it's still needed. A lot of mine is we still have kids that are very hard to, um, assure that they're on Zoom or, or engaged on a daily basis. So we do have some students who we consider true and we would like to continue with, um, being able to take them to SAR and especially now that we have some extra funds that, that came from, from the federal and state to do so.
And at this time, it's per student, not a package.
Correct, it was per student, yes.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Uh, first, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point five, approval of twenty twenty-one interquest detention canine contract.
This is a contract that we hand to, um, basically every year for the canines to come on campus and basically this never, uh, drug, uh, or drug dogs. However, we will only be billed when they are able to do so when we're needed. So we simply have a contract, but there will be no payment of services until there are services lifted. So for now, it's just to, to hold our place.
I actually saw that contract and I was like, wait, well, why are we even discussing this? And I read it and it's a really nice open contract, it's a really nice open letter. If you guys haven't read it, really, you can read it. It says that they understand the situation of the schools. If we're needed, call us, if we're not, there's absolutely not one fee.
They go to book and.
Um, usually as needed, so if, uh, if administrator needs them to call.
There's, there's a part of it that is a completely, um, unknown to us. But we as administrators can also have the opportunity to please suspect if something, we can request that they come. But most of the time, they are unannounced and, and show up.
Well, if we could only teach you to sniff out COVID. But usually in the past, it's, um, like, like, like Mr. Brazil said, they just, they show up or if a, if a principal administrator has any questions, they, they, they call them and they'll send them over to dogs. Um, same company, very great service, uh, again, I really like the way the contract was written. It's not one, like the SAR, we usually have to pay a flat rate and all that stuff. This is, if you need us, call us, if you don't, we understand your, your situation.
Do they also do demonstrations for the kids?
Um, usually during, every week they'll come out and, uh, be proactive with all that stuff.
They're, they're happy to do that.
It's a very good company, they get, they practice with dogs with, during assembly, so it's, it's pretty, it's a good program. Uh, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
What we got on, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of school reopening waiver application.
So then this item is, is on the agenda. Once again, as a result of today, the announcement by the governor at midday was that the Stan Soss County had actually moved from purple to red, so to tier two. Um, which if we remain at tier two for the next fourteen days, which would take us through, um, October twenty-seventh, if my math is correct, um, then we would be able to open without a waiver. The application for a waiver is taking approximately two weeks. Um, there are a number that have been, are still pending and there are some that have been approved by the districts. However, there are very few that have actually moved forward to implement. So at, at this time, it's whether the board wishes to wait, um, until the twenty-seventh, uh, to, uh, or if the board wishes to, uh, to direct me to go forward and apply for the waivers. So that, that's the, the item on the agenda.
Applying for the waiver doesn't, in no way forces to have to open.
It. No, it, it, it does not. Um, and there are districts who apply, um, and are still working the, the terms of how they will truly open.
And I think right now that with the changes in colors and the amount of planning we have done, I do not think a waiver would be smart, uh, use of time.
And just hearing from her about Agosto closing already.
So do we have a motion, do we?
I'll make a motion that we do not go for the waiver.
All right, uh, first or a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point seven, approval of reinstatement of five furlough days uh, on the Keyes Learning Charter status schedule.
Yes, this is, um, as, again, as we were planning back in early, uh, spring um, and into mid-March, uh, we were all being told that we obviously would be in need to cut about ten percent across the board. And so the charter, in order to remain in good fiscal sound, uh, position, uh, agreed to five days of furlough. Um, and what we're asking is that we did not actually from the state get cut by that percentage. So what we're asking is that the board approve that we reinstate those days and then employees are not, um, giving up tho- those days as furloughs.
Do you have anything to add or?
Just sort of giving them the feedback.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no, this, this will, um, yeah, this was, as he said, because of the budget cut of ten percent. And so this would have balanced it out for three years, so we're really glad that we can bring this back to have folks reinstated for us.
Perfect. And I just, I just want to share that, you know, in the midst of all this, we're already preparing for budgeting for the next s- school year. Um, and things don't look good. So that, some of the stuff that we're doing, maybe things will go right back to the table and have to re-implement again. I just wanted to share that that's kind of the, the nature of what we're.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Um, first or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You stick about that one. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, ten point eight, approval of twenty twenty-one KUSD certified fixed stipend rates.
It's just setting the, the, the rates for the stipends to, to be up.
Something we normally do, it's just because of the way the campuses and most of the stipends are attached to when kids are in campus.
Absolutely.
Uh, any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Uh, first or a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, eleven point one, COVID-19, we have this. Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, eleven point one, COVID nineteen, we've had this one on every single month. Do we need to add anything to that?
Um, no, again, the only thing I'd like to, to share is I've shared with, with staff today as well is that, that again, the governor has indicated that. Um, we moved from the purple to the red. Again, that's the fourteen days. So on the twenty-seventh would be the last day if cases continue to remain where they are. Um, but then again, schools would be able to open and not just TK through six is what I want to, to show everyone. It would be TK through twelve. Um, uh, again, but that's uh in, in not doing the waiver. Um, so that's about the only thing I have. Uh, there are, you know, we can each have our own opinion and we're tied into it and I completely understand that. Um, but it is, it is one of those rare things that most of us, let's hope we never have to live through it again. One of those things that it really does come down to, uh, what do you believe, who do you believe, and what is the driving factor for all of that? And I have to say as superintendent, I think about it every day, aside from my personal opinions, as to the fact that I'm responsible for students and for staff. And to me, that's where I have to make my decision. My decision, however, does not um take into anything emotional or, or politically driven. That's from my own opinion. I can keep that to myself and that's, that's where I keep it. I think that science needs to be um read. Yes, every study can be skewed, both positively or negatively. And I think that that is where, this is never uh divided. I, I don't think there's been a topic that has ever been so dividing of a nation and certainly of our community. Um, and there's really no easy answer. What I've shared with the board and I'll share with everyone is whatever decision is made, it will not be okay for some and it will be okay for others. But again, I think and I ask that the board continue to make those decisions based on what is best for kids and what is best for staff based on what we're seeing and, and hearing. We are hearing that cases are on the rise. There are some states who are increasing. There are overseas. It seems that both um the United Kingdom and Italy are having surges once again. Again, I'm not crying wolf. I'm not, I'm just stating that some of this, if, if it's happening, we need to be, that, that tuned to it and take it into consideration.
Also, now, so as long as the county's going down, we could open on October twenty-seventh. Doesn't mean we have to open on October twenty-seventh.
You, you would actually be able to open up on October twenty-eighth.
But we, that isn't a.
Then, no, you don't have to, but, but you, you would be, but you would and you would never hear a waiver.
So Jimmy's saying we reserve the right.
We have the right to either open or not open. So we'll decide.
And I think what I, what I.
Sorry, do we reserve that? I mean, is, is that up to the board or to our staff all of the, is part of this decision?
Absolutely. Um, I think that what, what my, um, is going to be shared in my superintendent's report, but my recommendation, I think at this point is we found this out today, um, that we actually officially moved. There was rumor it would have been a week ago and it wasn't because data numbers were skewed. Um, so now we find ourselves where we are. Um, and to, we really need to, um, also, because we have moved forward with the, with the waiver, we've not really looked at our families and asked how many of you would return as staff members? How many of you are willing to, to come back? You know, we need to plan and we have every plan under the sun, whether it's an A, B, a two day on, two day off, three day on, four day off. But whatever it is, we, we truly have been making plans since March seventeenth of when we closed. That's, that's been how many plans we've made and every day there's a different one. Um, so a- at this point, I'm asking that the district have some time to conduct some of these surveys, both with our staff and with our parents and community and get the numbers to see what is possible for us to reopen. And if indeed we need to have another board meeting prior to, to um the next scheduled one, the scheduled one for November, then, then that will be an okay thing. But I think we need some time to get our um numbers together and to then truly have a plan that we can implement. Cause a lot of the districts are, they have their plans, but they're learning even with the waiver, that now they aren't able to implement it as they said they would because they didn't consider some of the staffing and, and those kinds of, of issues. So um, that's kind of where, where I am. Um, I also very firmly believe that if one child, knowing one child is any greater than the other, the value of their life to me is the same. And so if you allow a certain group to return, but you don't another, I, I don't think that that's very um, uh, that's, but again, maybe that's my personal belief. That I think, again, every life should be treated the same way.
Cause the waiver already gives you twenty-five percent to.
Correct. We would then be able to move into the, the fifty percent. So we could have fifty percent on, um, and fifty percent.
I think that's a lot of things our parents don't understand. So like twenty-five percent of kids. And so seventy-five percent could be their kid.
Yeah, and so who do, you know, how many teachers do we have to, have to be able to do distance learning? Because we may have, you know, a hundred or a hundred and twenty kids that choose to not return or whose parents um will not allow them to return. They'll be offered that. We'll have to have teachers doing independent study. We'll have teachers doing distance learning. Then we'll have teachers doing classroom work. Uh, again, I think that was very well pointed out uh by Mr. Falcone that subs are not an easy thing to find. And a substitute is not the solution to dis- to doing away with distance learning. A substitute, as great as they are, and bless their souls for doing it, there is nothing like a classroom teacher and we get it. It's just the issue of safety truly, um, is, is the, is the real hindrance here.
And I do want to add, like, I have some closure remarks I'll, I'll read that I, I wrote up, but um Superintendent Brazil has tried to send out surveys in the past when I thought they were just too early and I thought it would give false hope out. And so when we hear the comments and stuff that we're not doing anything, we are. It's just if we would have sent a survey out two, three weeks ago, finding out what those numbers were and then things changed, are those numbers even accurate or are we giving false hope? So uh, I do want to put that out, but I did, I did uh, we consulted over it and, and I, I thought it was just too early to put the false hope, especially with our, our folks. We've had five and O on, on a waiver. You know, Jeff, I think the, the, the thing here that I want to be cited is we all, and I mean all, want our school open. Safe. Safe. Yeah. And that's the key. We all want it. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen today, tomorrow, the next day, next month, next year. But that's our driving force. Why? Because we love our children. We want to educate our children. This is what we do. So I think it's imperative that we all understand that, that we're on the same page, we're on the same team, one for all, all for one. Quote from the Three Musketeers. I think this is true today as it was back then. This is our team. We're gonna make mistakes. We're gonna fumble sometimes. But this is a team and we're gonna make this decision as a team. I, I, I believe I speak correctly in speaking these things, so. But I do think with switching colors, it is time to, to uh, put those waivers, or not the waivers, put the uh surveys into, into act and see what the, see what the numbers are. See what, see what the town people want and you.
Who wants to come back.
We all live in this community. We know what our neighbors want. They, they tell us every, every time we see them.
Staff and I, um, and I, I want to thank my district office staff to, for really, um, Dana, Raul, all of them, um, for working so hard because we have heard time surveys and on letters. I, I devised letters and um refined them, taken things out, added things. Um, so we are ready to proceed with, with asking and I think that that will be something that we will most definitely spend the rest of this week, making sure that we get out information and ask the right questions. And that then by the end of uh the fall, so a week from Friday, um, that we kind of at least after a full week of asking parents and staff what they think and what they would like to see, that we will be at a better position to then um share with the board, here is where, where, or the numbers we have, here is, here are the findings that we've come with. And now how do you, or, and giving some suggestions on how do we proceed now and how do we open? Uh, and then let the board make that decision at that time. But I think it's, it's, it's a needed step and granted, I, I know that everybody that has, uh, you know, they, why didn't we? We did lots of surveys, but the, it, it's still sometimes data skewed, people don't have time, there's language barriers, there's all kinds of things. And so we want to make sure that what we put out, that people truly understand. You know, we want to make sure that if we open, we have kids on the same exact schedule as their um siblings in the high school, for example. We don't want to have them on different dates. That doesn't support parents. That doesn't help with, with childcare. So those are all things that we really want to, we want to get it right. And, and again, I, I would hate for us to see this yo-yo effect if indeed things are, are coming, um, uh, again. Uh, uh, so that's, I mean, where, where I would like us to, to have.
Especially when the clue is nothing on our backboard.
I think the color change makes a lot of things more approachable now. And so I, I think that's what like, I, I'm, again, I'll say it again and I'll say it again and I'll say it again. I'm very impressed with the board's vote on safety and um we're still safe, but I think it's now till time to, to let the admins get the numbers they wanted several weeks ago that I didn't think was ready. Alright, moving on to eleven point two, twenty twenty-one learning continuity and attendance plan feedback.
So as you know, we have to submit a learning continuity and attendance plan in place of the LCAP this year to our county, both the charter school and um the, the, the regular district. And so we were approved without any, um, all with their meeting expectations basically. And they stated uh simply at the end, all of the components of the learning continuity and attendance plan, the LCP, have been sufficiently addressed. Reviewers from the Stanislaus County Office of Education have no additional feedback or recommendations regarding the district's LCP submission. So our next step now is a budget um friendly document to parents that is due in December that we are working to make it as transparent and as easy to understand uh and yet meet the requirements of the state's uh auditors and, and direction.
Alright, moving on to reports, superintendent report.
Well, I think in terms of reports, I, I do want to once again um thank staff for the amazing job that each and every one of uh, of, of the employees of this district have done since March and continue to. And I will say that the stress levels have so increased to levels that um I think there are many people who, and I understand that, even in, in homes, obviously. People are at a breaking point. And I wish that there was a quick solution and a quick fix and unfortunately I just don't particularly see it. But we will. I think that staff, however, have, I asked for two words. I asked, let's be flexible and let's be compassionate. Those were the two things I asked, including in grading, including in how you deal with, with kids. Um, and that continues to be the most important thing. We need to be flexible and do what we need to do, but we need to do it with compassion. I think that's very important. I also want to share, because I had a number of employees calling me and they did not want to speak uh or come. They, they didn't feel that, but they wanted their voices heard, that they have either circumstances in their lives to where they've not been out of the house many times since March of the closure. And they are doing everything they can to either keep children or relatives or family members uh or love or partners, whatever it may be. That they are afraid of this and this is very real to them. And to some people, we'll simply brush it apart. You know, you can't brush people's feelings uh apart no more for, because they, they are scared of it than for those of you who think it's nothing. It's, it's, it is very. Uh, so I wanted to share that. I, I, I think that um from day one, um, the issue really has been about safety. And none of us went into education to do this and to deal with, with COVID. I wish if that had been, I think I, I, I would have taken the class twice to see, yeah, I would have picked up a little more. Um, so again, I just want to thank everybody who is um really, and again, and the board, because this is tough and I know that you, you face the, the, the public and uh, but again, you, you also serve kids and um I commend you all and thank you for, for what you're doing. So thank you.
Alright, moving on. Any questions or anything? Moving on, the board member comments, Mr. Williams?
Well, I'd say just like everybody else said, we, we're all on the same page as far as opening school. I, I can't wait till it opens up, but it's gotta be done right. It's gotta be the right time. Hopefully in a few weeks, we'll see some really good numbers and we'll start coming back, but we have to wait and see.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate that.
Mr. Green?
Well, I think the main note, especially Mr. Falcone, after listening to you, I, I think in the beginning, I almost thought I was being attacked a little bit, to be honest with you. I almost felt like, like have I made a decision that wasn't in some kind of conducive way to what you feel? And I thought, well, yeah, I haven't made any decisions. So as you went on, I listened more and more in depth. And I understood by the end of your um, of your conversation that you don't want schools open right now. Bottom line, you're just not ready. So the first question that came to my mind is I, I wrote down, Mr. Falcone, can we perfect in any kind of decent manner distance learning? Can we do it as educators? And then, then our superintendent happens to say something that was profound. He says, he says, you know, we're, we're all kind of in this boat. But the, the way it's working out, you know, he didn't sign up for it. And, and I thought, yeah, yeah, you did. See, I, I'm gonna fight over you right now because you did sign up.
No way.
You signed up because you wanted to educate life experiences to children. Well, if this isn't a life experience that's teaching children, I don't know what is. It, it, it isn't always gonna be textbook perfect because life isn't textbook perfect. This is an opportunity. If we just flip that coin around, we, we can, we can gain some strength from this. We can learn from this. We can teach our children to learn from this because life isn't perfect. And that is what education is about, teaching children. I believe in my heart of hearts, this is just another phase of teaching children. I think we all are on the same team a hundred percent. I think Jeff said it, we're gonna have different opinions. I get it. But at the end of the day, I think back on a quote I heard from General Patton, one of our greatest generals ever. I'm a history person, so I, I kind of remember in history from this school what he said back in fifth grade, I think it was. They asked Mr. Patton, how do you make these horrific decisions that, that affect millions of people's lives? How do you do it? He said very quietly and very, very appropriately, doesn't mean the decisions I make are right, but I'm in charge of making that decision. And what I'm gonna do is make a decision because that's my job. And it doesn't mean it's gonna be right. I'm gonna utilize every bit of information I can to get it as right as I can. And the longer way, I'm gonna change if it needs to be changed. And I think that's what's gonna happen to us. I think eventually we're gonna have to make a hard line decision. It's gonna happen. Whether it be this year, next year, so I ask you, Mr. Falcone, are we capable of teaching these children in a comprehensive way? Distance learning, online, can we do it? I don't know. You're, you're the expert there. I have all the faith in you and all our staff and all of our teachers that we can. Because that may be, and, and there you go. And that may be one of the decisions that we're gonna have to make, right? Can we do that? So I just want to end by saying, I hope that when and if the time comes to open, I hope as a team that we're all on the same page because we have to be for it to work. And I think that's the key. We all have to be on the same page. We can't have half yeses and half no's. It has to be unanimous. We're going forward. And until then, I, I just, I wouldn't feel comfortable about making a decision. So I think with the um, with the information we're gonna send out, um, gather up as much data as we can. I think that helps us make an educated decision and, and I think at the end, I think we'll make the right decision because I think we're a great, awesome team. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Gray?
You know, uh, we talked about this many times in the past too. I mean, obviously, these are very difficult times. You know, very testing times and uh everyone is going through this uh, you know, very difficult time. Where do you, where do I, here, teachers association, uh, you know, school employees association, uh, where do you, I mean, it's, I know where you stand. I respect that. Uh, I said this from day one, uh, safety must first, you know, for everyone. I know where you stand. I respect that. Uh, I said this from day one, uh, safety comes first, you know, for everyone, for my family and your family, safety comes first. Uh, for you and also I hear uh my neighbors, you know, when, whenever, you know, we get a chance to talk, uh, I hear them too. But I mean, I, you know, I'm not willing to risk anyone's life when it comes to uh COVID nineteen. Uh, maybe in two weeks, when you are done with the survey, we will have some numbers to add. You know, you, you will see those numbers. And that will be something else, you know, at that time, once we look at those numbers. Uh, you know, I am open minded. I will see, you know, how those surveys turn in and what those surveys are tell us. Uh, so once I look at those surveys, you know, uh, I'm going to do my own analysis. I'm going to make my own judgment. And then, you know, uh, we'll go from there. But uh, just like my own family, I want to make sure that we want to save. Safety is the key. You know, that is priority for me. So I am going to wait to look at those surveys, to look at those numbers and then uh decide and go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
All I gotta say to the parents out there, please be patient with us. And thank you to all the teachers. They're working hard out there.
All right. I had a long thing written out and then after the colors change, I'm not sure if I was gonna read it, but after listening to Mr. Feltoni and Homer, I'm gonna read it. Uh, with my closing remarks, I feel the need to address about the decision about not reopening. We have gotten many emails about why we should reopen. I personally have gotten plenty of conversations in town, around the store, the top of trucks, about opening up also. Uh, short talk with some of those, uh, sharing my reasonings, changes of conversation to understand and thank you for thinking of everything. Back in March, when closing was a, uh, was an option, it was a very scary time. Numbers were low and unknown. We, uh, yet we closed the school. Before even closing the, the school, our superintendent and admin staff already had so many plans in and uh working, building more. As super and admin will recall, I said, don't make plans. It's too early. We wait. Uh, wait to see what plans were given by the county and state. They still made those plans, which put us in a great spot now, which we are very grateful for. I may not agree with every idea they come up with, but because they have continuously planned since March, I can honestly say they have so many solid working viable plans. I appreciate their willingness to dedicate so much time, including over the summer, all the staff did. Uh, so much pre-planning and sharing and then replanning. We have the plans to open. We have the knowledge to open. And just because they have been shared doesn't mean they're not there. My biggest concern in closing a school was emotional state of students and staff, even the families. That was our biggest concern. I saw firsthand, I lived it firsthand. Uh, no, uh, oh, here we go. My biggest concern with closing a school was emotional state of students and staff and even the families. I was right. My own kids went months and months without any contact with their friends. I saw firsthand, I lived it firsthand. This whole board has seen their families affected by the closure of the campuses. We were put in a situation on what to do, what to believe and where do we take caution and where do we take the shakes? I for one do care about the staff and the students and what comes down to it, the people in, in our staff and students' lives too. I constantly said I believe in opening uh can, can or will happen when we can open K, uh TK to twelve. I understand young grades need the support. Have many times gone and helped close family, friends, stepdad to get on Zoom and keep motivated. It's extremely hard. We know this and we understand this. But education is important for all grades and so is staff. Safety important to all grade levels too. We open slowly or grade, like grade, what's that gonna do to the families and staff who are working in full classes or not? As today, we have a local high school already closed because of all this. These families absolutely deserve an education for their students, but also deserve stability and safety in sending their students to our campuses. This isn't political. This isn't what the news says. This is the board, an admin team and crucial staff that all equal as the other making decisions on what's best for our community. We will never know what's right and we'll never know what's wrong. Who has the right news or who has the right numbers, what to believe. But I can sit here tonight and every night, we need to come down here and discuss this, knowing I voted with my heart and commitment to do what's best for our community. It's tough. We know what you guys go through and we, we know. And we know what, we, we know that school is better here, but it's just not safe yet. And I am so proud of the board that they keep taking the safety stance and our admin team. And again, we've butted heads before with the super, you know, numbers, numbers, numbers. But if we're not ready, let's wait. And we're, we're getting there. We're moving along. But I appreciate all the support. I appreciate all this, everything the staff's doing and we heard you. And Homer, you know I'd be here the first day school's open, I would do anything. These are, this board lives in the community. There are kids. And, and you know that the board is very close to the staff here. All right. And again, special meetings, please. If need special meetings, we'll make them happen. Moving on to the next board meeting will be September fifteenth. Close session is five thirty. Reopening session at six. Oh.
November.
Who, uh, who made the agenda? Oh, oh. Oh, geez.
It's a birthday.
When are evaluations coming up? All right. Uh, thank you guys all for sticking around. Do we have a motion to adjourn at seven eighteen?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I have.
All favoritists?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.